Okay, we are on.
For thirty. Call the meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Start off with citizen concerns. Is there anyone to be concerned? Move on with the approval of the agenda. I'll move it. Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items four through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item four, approval of the minutes of the August twentieth, twenty nineteen, meeting. Item five, approval of claims. Item six from Board of Administration, A, approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process. B, approval of resolution thanking and commending Lori Baldwin for years of service with Woodbury County. Item seven from Human Resources, A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorization to initiate hiring process. C, approval of retiree request to remain on county health insurance plan. Item eight from Board Administration, A, approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcels known as twenty-one oh seven and twenty-one eleven Myrtle Street for Tuesday, September tenth at four thirty-five P. M. Item B, approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel known as two twelve Kansas Street for Tuesday, September tenth at four thirty-seven P. M. Item nine from Secondary Roads, consideration of a utility permit for installation of fiber-optic cables in County Rightway for Quest Communications Century Elite QC. All right. And that ends the consent agenda. I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. Any questions or concerns? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes five to zero. Item ten, our Rolling Hills Regional Update. Welcome, Don. We're fast, see? Item ten, all righty.
All right. Good afternoon. Jeremy's asked me to come and just give you as a board a regional update because we've got a lot of things that are happening at pretty quick pace within Rolling Hills right now. Obviously, the merger happened July first and very successful. We felt very good about the finances at this point. We're working with Sioux Rivers on final payout back to Woodbury County. That is in the works, and we're monitoring that. So, other than that, things really are going well. We've got three initiatives that we're working on right now, and we have not only Rolling Hills representatives at the table, the task forces that are meeting are for several initiatives that I think I've mentioned in the past, and I'll get into a little bit here just shortly. But Rolling Hills is working with Sioux Rivers. We're partnering with Sioux Rivers as well as Northwest Iowa Care Connections. They have been coming to some of the meetings that we're holding in Holstein because we know that these tasks or the services that we have to develop are going to be very costly and no one region can do them on, you know, alone. So, these task forces have really been putting in a lot of time and effort in. I've had multiple representatives from all counties at these task forces. Three have been meeting the first Thursday of every month since April. Woodbury County has several representatives coming to Holstein for all of the task forces, particularly your law enforcement and local law enforcement. So, that's been really gratifying to have them at the table because this is, you know, mobile crisis services especially, they need to be there and have the information and be part of that planning process. So, yes, Mobile Crisis is the first initiative that we are working on, and it's really kind of unique in the fact that Sulon Mental Health Center is going to be providing Mobile Crisis Response for law enforcement, and this is going to be done primarily in Woodbury County. And Plains Area Mental Health Center is also going to be implementing Mobile Crisis out of our seven counties. But the proposal that they're putting together is actually a joint effort, and both providers are calling it, they're in the process right now of selecting a name for the Mobile Crisis Response Program. Initially, they thought they wanted it to be called Rolling Hills Mobile Crisis Response, but that was something that could have had further implications that we didn't really want to take on that responsibility even though the region is fully funding it. So, they're in the process right now of surveying and taking a poll to be able to name the program, and it's going to just be one program for both Woodbury Counties programmed through Sulon Mental Health and our seven counties as well through Plains Area. And just because you have somebody that would be from Woodbury County that might need Mobile Crisis, or maybe it's somebody that's on the border of Woodbury County, it does not prevent one program for supplementing for the other. So, it's really a joint initiative, and that's been great to see. We are looking at an implementation rollout of October of November this year for both programs. Plains Area was a little bit quicker to implement, but they've been working on this a little bit longer because of all of the moving, you know, between regions. And so, Sulon Mental Health will be up and ready to go. We're waiting on both programs to be ready to roll out at the same time, so it minimizes confusion across the region, so. Another task force that has been meeting is the Access Center. And of course, as you recall, that these are required services that all regions have to have in place or access to by July first of two thousand twenty-one. And when we did our strategic planning as a region back in January of this year, these three services I'm going to talk about were identified as the top priorities for Rolling Hills at this time. The Access Center is going to take a lot longer to develop and implement because this is going to be a very costly service. A lot of the regions are looking at a virtual access model, which is creating a network of providers that someone in crisis can be served and supported in the community. What our task force for the Access Center is looking at is a brick-and-mortar structure, and we have yet to decide where that is going to be. There's some required services under that umbrella that both of our mental health providers are very hesitant to provide because of the licensing requirements and the cost involved. And then, of course, there's always the uncertainty with a managed care organization supporting it for long-term funding. And then, the last task force we have going on right now is the intensive residential service homes, and these are actually really high-level services provided into the, in the community for people with complex needs. So, it's not going to be just any, there are specific requirements to be able to access Medicaid funding for the intensive residential beds, and we have received one proposal from a provider at this point. The proposal, depending on which, what direction we decide to go before, and we're really premature in making a recommendation or a request to the governance board, but the first proposal came in at seven hundred and ten thousand. So, that's to serve about seven people in the region. There's also a pared-down version by the provider that's made the proposal of around two hundred thousand dollars for two beds. So, until all the questions are answered by the state regarding that service, and we know that there's going to be a long-term sustainable funding option, we just have to work all those details out yet, so. You know, as I mentioned, we had really good attendance from a lot of the local stakeholders here and from Woodbury County, which has been, you know, great input, great attendance. The other thing that we're just getting involved in, if you watch the legislation or the legislative session and are aware that Governor Reynolds passed the State Mental Health Children's Behavioral State Board and that legislation back in March, all the regions are now tasked with the children's mental health system on top of the adult system that we are most familiar with. And I, back in July, our advisory board pulled together plans to start working on the implementation plan that we have to have due to the Department of Human Services by April first of two thousand twenty. So, we are on a very fast track to put this implementation plan together. The advisory board's direction was to pull a group of stakeholders from early childhood, the AEA's, the educational system, and of course, children's behavioral health service providers together and to kind of set the process in motion. And we had that first meeting today in Holstein. It lasts, it was ten to noon, great attendance. We had forty individuals at the table, and it was very clear to us that we're going to have to really set some work groups off of this large group so that we can put some plans together and address all the parameters. And at the same time, we're putting this together, we don't have the administrative rules yet, and I'm hearing from one of our board members, Dennis Bush from Cherokee County. He serves on the State Commission, and he thinks his best guess would be January at the earliest that we'll have the administrative rules to go by. So, we have to be working on our plans. At the same time, we don't have the rules solidly in place, and unfortunately, that's going to be about the same time we're all working on budgets. So, that implementation plan is due to DHS on April first, so. Questions for me? Jeremy, anything else that you would like me to cover?
I'm just very appreciative of you coming over as well as how well the transition's gone. One example would be, we have a hundred and two thousand four forty-nine Rolling Hills, the other seven counties, ninety...
Ninety-five, two thirty.
Ninety-five, two thirty. So, the fact that we both have a crisis and stabilization center and are stepping up mobile response teams seems appropriate, and I know we'll have to revisit that in the future, but I'm just, I think that that shows great parity and coverage. Only a couple of things I wonder if you'd address. We have a map where it shows all providers. If you could send that, I think that'd be great.
I will, yeah. One of our newest members on the governance board had asked me to put a map together that designates by county what services available, just so that when these providers are coming to make any requests, he has some framework to go by. So, I have, I pulled that together this summer, and I gave a copy to governance board members, and if you need me to, I'll just send you another copy, Jeremy. You can forward it out for me.
You mean, somebody asked for it, and she did it? Oh, that's really cool.
Well, yeah.
Sorry, it's just a reference to the previous board.
Helpful to have, you know, information as far as when you're discussing different services and providers, so, yeah.
Well, there are two things. Can you talk about the increased deflection rates when you have mobile crisis that's tied to a crisis and stable? And you don't have to give specific numbers, but the point of having those integrated rather than...
That's what we're hoping for through, with the deflection rates from the hospitals, you know, unnecessary hospitalizations, so that we can free up beds for those who truly need to be there. We, history has shown that a lot of times, these impatient psychiatric committals as well as just hospitalizations, they maybe are not necessary, and a person that's hospitalized from a mental health situation, they are released by the physician within a couple of days. And it's, it's a lot of work for law enforcement to be able, be transporting across the state, and so we're trying to minimize some of that. But from what I've been told by other Mobile Crisis Teams that have been available in the state for several years, Southwest Iowa is a good example, their deflection rates are around ninety percent, and that, that's really high. I mean, they, it's not a foolproof or fail-proof method, but it's, it's just meeting a person in their environment wherever they're comfortable and not traumatizing further that situation and bringing them out, you know, by sheriffs or law enforcement and taking them to the hospital, so. And then, following up with that individual, it's not that they're just, the staff are going to intervene on that first episode. They're going to follow up with that person and make sure that they have, you know, services and ample support in the community.
In this case, instead of going to the hospital, they could come directly to the crisis.
They could go to the crisis center, which would increase their utilization. We, both crisis centers have open beds frequently, and so we're hoping to be direct, you know, feed into our crisis centers where it's appropriate. And also, you know, and a lot of the folks we may find just need somebody to talk to in that moment in time, and maybe will just stay home, you know, in their home with supports and follow up the next day, so.
As good as Steve Drew and Todd Wick and all the deputies are, training problems are extensive, so it's good that they're able to go with someone. The other, only other question I have is, anything on the rise as far as MCO funding? You know, we're talking about the legislature and children's mental health and how that will be funded, but is there any moving of the ball downfield, or is that situation kind of...
Well, in my observation, I think it's pretty much the same, Jeremy, especially in light of the fact that United pulled out of Iowa, and then we had the transition over to a new provider, Iowa Total Care. We, as a CEO collaborative, have monthly meetings with the MCOs to advocate on our behalf for them to pick up the cost of some of these services ongoing because the crisis codes are available, and I mean, those are services that can be billed out. It's just a matter of the MCO's pain, and that's, that's been a struggle. I think any provider that is a Medicaid provider right now that you talk to would tell you the same, unfortunately. And as far as the children's system, I'm glad you brought that up about the funding because when, there was a fiscal note that came out back in January by Just Benson that was attached to that bill, there was a very small amount of funding that they were thinking, you know, that they were assessing that it was going to cost the regions to fund the children's system. And the more I've gotten to understand the language of the bill and what the whole intention is, which is for the regions to lead and develop a system for kids, we are going to probably be a minor funder. We are the ones that are going to be leading the system and developing services and making sure there's access to crisis stabilization, Mobile Crisis for Kids. But as far as being the main funder, it is not going to be the regions because almost every child has access to either Medicaid in some form in the state of Iowa or private insurance. So, and Jan Hykes from DHS was at our meeting today, and she stepped us down through the rules that are, or the code, and she, I think she quoted it, I'm, I'm not for certain, but I believe it came out of that fiscal note that it was three percent of the children in Iowa that would receive any regional funding for ongoing services, so. And the other thing to keep in mind is it's a specific population. It's not just the, anybody with a mental health issue. It is for kids who meet the criteria of having a serious emotional disturbance, and that is all going to be defined yet and ruled, so. You have any questions?
Anything else for Don here? Thank you for the update, and thank you for coming to the board meeting.
Anytime. I appreciate it. Thank you for inviting me out.
Moving on to item eleven from community and economic development. Approval to allocate a thousand dollars in two days, sixteen hours of paid time off for the employee United Way contribution campaign. For which employee, David?
Excuse me?
For which employee?
All of them.
All of them? Don't say that.
It's that time of the year again. County employees are raising funds for United Way, the Impact Fund. Those funds support education, income, and health initiatives for families in Sulon. Last year, the board approved a thousand dollars in two PTO days for the campaign, and last year, county employees raised twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars in total. We're hoping to increase the number of employees who donate and increase donations this year by slightly over ten and a half percent. Our goal is twenty-three thousand dollars as an organization. Excuse me, one of the things that we're trying to do this year to, to boost participation is a beanbag cornhole tournament that will play games during the employee appreciation luncheon as well as during the employee wellness fair. So, the idea is that we would have teams registered to play at ten dollars an entry. All of those funds go towards our campaign, and so we're hoping that that will give us an extra boost.
And those teams are teams of two, and I don't know if we need to have two board teams to go and potentially dominate this tournament? I don't know why that was so funny. No, it's...
The first funny thing you've said.
Yeah, thanks. Ever. Brutal today. Seriously, though, are you guys already signing up for a team, or was there anybody...
I can't that day. I think I'm unavailable for...
For dignity's sake?
Joshua's registered.
Is he?
DJ.
DJ and I.
That could be a challenging team there.
Ringers.
I know how Joshua plays softball. He's really good at...
College athletes.
Yeah. Underhand pitching?
But so, that's the proposal, the recommendations that the board approved, the budget of a thousand dollars out of gaming revenue.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabon. Any other discussion, questions?
Just want to, I don't want to detract from the issue again, but are we staying on the September tenth, given the...
We'll have to bring that up at the end, I guess, so.
I've been cued in, so we'll, we'll adjust accordingly.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to item twelve. Thank you, David. No, it's Ryan.
Due to scheduling conflicts, Mr. Weber was unavailable, so I stepped in.
All right. Acting Campaign Manager.
I tried to give it to him, but...
Must have a golf like that.
So, item twelve, Secondary Roads, approval of resolution to vacate access right-of-way on Old Highway one forty-one, Smithland.
There's a section of right-of-way that has been deemed excessive along one forty-one. It actually even bisects a home on property, as you can see on the plat. The owner has even done, had a survey performed at his own expense and has completed that vacation plat at the direction of Mark. Mark would suggest that the board approve the resolution to vacate the access right-of-way along the roadway without a public hearing under the circumstances that it does not change the travel portion of the road or deny any access to any of the adjoining landowners.
Mr. Brineberg, is he okay with this? He's okay with this, Dan, or how is this...
Yeah, he, he actually, it was, he asked, he approached Mark.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by Young. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to item thirteen, Emergency Services. Approval of emergency services to purchase the two thousand six Hackney Freightliner air and light unit for a hundred forty-nine thousand to replace the nineteen eighty-nine F-seven-fifty air and light truck, Unit two oh eight.
Good afternoon, Gary Brown, Director of Woodbury County Emergency Services. Believe I've visited last couple of weeks with each of the board members to give you more background of what we doing, we're doing here. During the last year's budgeting process, we were asked to submit capital improvement project requests. Our department submitted a request for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to replace Unit two zero eight. Unit two zero eight's the largest truck in our fleet. It's a three-ton F-seven-fifty Ford, has a utility body on the back of it that is in excess of fifty years old. The chassis is a nineteen eighty-nine. To put it in a little perspective, it was, it was at the crash of Flight two thirty-two as a unit. That unit provides two real important things at the scene of emergencies in the county, lighting and breathing air. Air tanks the firefighters wear on their backs, the hazmat teams, the diapers, has to be made by a DOT certified air compressor. It's not your standard shop air compressor. That compressor is maintained for us through a contract with Municipal Emergency Services by a DOT certified mechanic. We've had that unit here quite a while. It was actually purchased through some EPA funds that are no longer available to us to receive. We had gotten specifications and worked up a design of a replacement truck, and it would have come in in the neighborhood of two hundred and twenty thousand, very similar to the one that we're proposing to purchase now. We've been looking and watching the used fire truck trader magazines and websites. Three weeks ago, this unit out of Virginia popped up. It's a two thousand six Freightliner. It's got about thirteen, fourteen thousand miles on it, just under three hundred dollars on the, on the diesel engine. It also carries a compressor that's fifteen years newer than the one we currently have. We're proposing in our long-range budget in two thousand twenty-two, fifty-five thousand dollars to replace that compressor. So, the compressor that's onboard this truck, we've reached out to the manufacturer. We've been assured that that compressor, barring any unforeseen, should have been serviced to the department for at least the next twenty years. We believe the truck, well, it's, well, also, the company that has the truck, it's a used truck company, will go completely through this used truck, make sure everything is in working condition, service it, and provide us with a DOT certification that it's, that it's highway-ready. I believe this unit, we can bring this project in between the, just the truck is a seventy-one thousand dollar savings, and additionally, the compressor, the savings on the compressor not having the budget added for three years is another fifty-five thousand dollar savings for a hundred and twenty-six thousand. I provided the board a list of the calls that truck's been on since the first of the year. It's not an extremely busy piece of equipment, but it is a critical piece of equipment. It's one of two mobile air compressors in the county. Sergeant Bluff just obtained a unit. I spoke with the Sergeant Bluff Fire Chief, and he's not interested in providing that service to the rest of the county. He doesn't have the manpower or the resources to replace what we're doing. The unit that we have, it's not reliable anymore. It caught on fire once, the engine did. We've, we're en route to a fire at Sergeant Bluff and broke down, had to be towed in twice now, going to calls with that truck. It's just, it doesn't get a lot of miles on it, it's just sets a long time. So, with that, I'll, questions?
Is there anything in Iowa code that requires us to have this truck or a truck like it?
No. No, but I, I will say that, and with that statement, across the United States, there's a crisis in the volunteer fire and EMS world, and what you're seeing is more and more jurisdictions stepping up and helping those organizations. We've been in the game a little longer. Our mission is to support the volunteers and other responders out there. You know, on a, on a good day with a house fire, we may have to call five to nine fire departments together to fight one house fire. There's just a real shortage of manpower. I will also say there's a lot of services that are provided by the county that aren't required by law. So, we believe that we're providing the service at an economical cost, saves all the taxpayers' money. If we didn't provide this unit, chances are every town would have to go and invest in an air compressor and the expenses of maintaining it.
So, a few months ago, you let us know that we have a fire department down there.
We've always had one.
Is it certified or recognized by the state?
No.
Are, is there any in the state that are recognized or certified for county level?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, according to, I think his name's Scott Smith for our workers' comp insurance, there's eighty-one counties under their jurisdiction, and not one of those have a legitimate fire department.
Well, a lot of the tasks that we do don't fit under EMS. They fit under fire. That's why we call it...
But isn't, but isn't EMS supposed to respond to fires to be medical support for the firefighters that are actually there?
We do.
Okay, but isn't that their sole purpose is not, is to show up as EMS, emergency medical, and not as firefighters?
I'm not sure I understand.
Okay, when you have, okay, as I understand it from the comp center, your crews call in every morning and informs the comp center who's available for whatever call.
Correct.
Okay, so, so sometimes they get called because there's certain personnel available, and sometimes they don't for fire stuff?
We're automatically dispatched, we're simultaneously dispatched with the volunteer fire departments in fourteen communities.
But are they taking fire equipment, or are they taking...
Depends on the call.
Their emergency...
If it's a fire, if it's a house fire, structure fire, they take two units. The paramedic goes with the EMS truck, and the other EMT, fire person takes this unit two zero eight to the scene.
So, can the county levy at the county level for fire protection for residents?
The only way the county gets involved in levying business of fire protection is if the township trustees choose not to do their duties. Then it's up to the county to step in and take over for the township trustee.
As I understand it, according to that Iowa code, is that the counties may by resolution take over the fire services? I've got a copy of that right here if you'd like to see it. But that has to be done by resolution, not because we take it over arbitrarily.
We're not in the business of taking over the fire department. We're here as a supporting unit to the fire departments.
So, all this fire equipment that you have down there, I mean, did, we kind of inherited that from what, civil defense, I suppose, over the years?
I've been with the department, and I'm starting my thirty-eighth year on paid staff. Two years before that as volunteer. These are the, we've always done these. I mean, what we're doing today hasn't changed significantly from, other than we moved from Sioux City to Clamieville.
So, I've got my tax statement here that says Concord Township is taking out X amount of money for fire protection, which is required by code. On a side note, Mr. Smith from Workers' Comp Company said that the reason that counties don't levy for fire protection is because we're not required to. That's townships and municipalities. So, that said, it seems like if you want to take money for this equipment out of CIP, in effect, we'd be taxing the county residents twice for fire protection, once for municipalities and townships, and a second time because you want to take some out of CIP for this?
Well, what we're trying to do is to support the volunteer fire.
I get that, but at the same time, you're still asking the county taxpayers to pay twice for fire protection.
Well, they're either going to pay us to provide this service and support, or every town in the county's going to have to go out and buy the equipment to have it, because you can't have breathing air and not be able to resupply it.
So, but you told me a couple of weeks ago that there's mutual aid agreements all over the place.
Yes, the county, every department in Woodbury County belongs to a mutual aid agreement.
Right. So, it seems to me that there'd almost be no shortage. How often do these firefighters make entry into a burning structure?
Our firefighters do not make entry. They're prohibited by policy from making entry. Under Iowa code, there's two basically levels of fire service.
So, you have all the fire equipment down there, the SCBA's and everything?
No, we do not make entry.
So, you have all the SCBA's and that?
We've taken those out of service.
How come?
Because they're old and we don't, in order to make.
Were they ever certified? Were they ever, were your firefighters down there ever fit tested?
Yes.
And you have records of that upstairs in HR?
No.
Were they ever done, for all the ones that you claim are firefighters, were they given the pulmonary function test?
We do not, if I can explain, there's two levels of fire, okay? There's structural firefighters, and then there's ground support personnel. Structural firefighters are required to be fit tested, have pulmonary function tests. All fire ground personnel are required to have a physical every five years, okay? We do not make entry. We are not a structural team. In order to make entry into a fire, you have to have two firefighter ones with a line supplied off of a fire truck. For every two you send in, you have to have two more with a line supplied off of a separate truck. Because if they're in there in the truck, we never put our people in that position. We never have.
Nor are they qualified to.
They are not firefighter ones to make entry. A couple of them are, three of them are, I think, but we do not. And if you look at Iowa code, that second level of firefighter, the training is equal to, and it gives a list of the continuing education and the training requirements, and we meet all of those.
But Iowa code, as far as firefighters, which the county is not required to provide?
Right.
Okay, Dennis has a plan that might levy this against or ask the cities and municipalities, townships, whatever, to pay for this instead of we paying for it? Would you mind if he explained that for us?
Yeah, Dennis threw that in your board's packet there, and I think what Rocky's trying to get at, if we levy this out CIP, we are levying countywide, which does affect Sioux City, Sergeant Bluff, which they have their own units, and they don't care if this is water or not. But the rural towns do care, and the townships do care. But to make this so it isn't double taxation, I broke it down, I broke it down to where, what the share of the cost of the truck would be to each entity. When you take Sioux City and Sloan, or Sioux City and Sergeant Bluff out, it does increase the other costs to the individual townships and cities.
Can I just ask a real quick question? The means and mechanism of doing that and having a special levy that exempts certain, I thought we were in into this on the paramedic side, where you have certain carve-outs, Joshua, is that, I understand the rationale, and I'm not necessarily disagreeing with the rationale, but before we go too far down this, is there a means and mechanism that's legal that you can say, we're going to levy this against everybody except for X, Y, and Z for these reasons, or is that something you have to, or Dennis, do you know?
We can, all we can do is request. The city doesn't have to put it in, the townships don't have to put it in. We cannot actually levy a tax out there unless you file the one code section where on townships you could, but you got to do by resolution. You are assuming all the fire and ambulance protection of that township. And I don't know if the board really wants to get into that scenario.
Well, if we couldn't get it for, if we couldn't get it before, amicably that is, I don't think it's. You know, this isn't an issue of actual response to a 911 call.
No, this is just making the people pay for it that's going to use it. Sioux City'd care less.
Right, but even then, my point is, it was a, Jeremy's point, a tough sell.
And Sergeant Bluff just bought one, and I don't know what their price of their unit was, because what I understand is a lot less than we're paying for this one. I guess the size, and it probably isn't near the size we're, have projected here.
Why the big discrepancy in cost of that truck, do you know?
That I don't know.
It's the size of the truck and the size of the compressor. And I, from what I understand, Sergeant Bluff is looking to replace the one they bought with a larger unit already.
How often?
The fire chief told me, so.
But they're required to have it.
Somebody's got to fill the tanks. I guess, I guess maybe I should, we're not required to do anything my department does. The day, today, we have a crisis in the rural communities across the United States where they're providing EMS protection. It's not getting better, it's getting worse. You've got a number of counties across the state of Iowa that have figured that out, and they're partnering with their local emergency responders. County, cities, townships are all working together to try to take care of the need for those volunteers out there. If we lose the volunteers, just take a look at my budget, and multiply that by town, and you're going to get two people a shift, okay? In each town. That's not enough to even make entry if there's a small child trapped in a house, a family trapped in a house. If we don't support, everybody involved does not support these volunteer units and try to keep them as healthy as we possibly can. The building of taxpayers is going to be astronomical. It's happening in other communities where they're going out and hiring paid staff. You know, and I can make the same, I can make the same case before the board on a number of things the county provides. I can tell you that not every county provides Sheriff's Department Patrol to every town without billing. I can tell you that we provide the county, in our budget, a hazmat contract for the entire county, including all municipalities, because it's cost-effective and it's the smart way to do it, just like patrol. A little courthouse in Anthem, find me another county that's got one. We're not required to have it. We do not bill any town in Woodbury County other than Sioux City and Sergeant Bluff for 911 services or Starcom radio. We help the communities pay their some co-dues. We help them with their comprehensive plans. Emergency management is funded out of the county treasury. There is an option to, in Iowa code, for each of the municipalities to help with emergency management. And where that's been done across the state is a mess. It's an absolute mess. You suddenly have a town in the middle of a bucket here, like what happened in Deboing County, that decides they're not going to pay their largest town. And you've got an agency that's already just devastated with funding. So, there are a number of things, and I think we do these things, and these have come across over the years because it made sense. What we do through my department is in support of those volunteer agencies. And it makes sense what we're doing, and the crisis in the volunteer world is not going to go away. It's only going to get worse. I just sent two people to EMS instructors this last weekend, because we're going to try to run some classes at Clamie Hill to support these volunteers, to get people from the rural area to come to Clamie Hill. They don't have to go all the way to Sioux City, and they can get their training for EMT classes. We're going to have, we're going to try to do that as an experiment, and I got guys that are willing to come in on their days off, on their own time, in support of the volunteers out there. So, you know, I guess, I feel like we are in compliance with Iowa code with everything that we do. And there's a lot we do that we're not required. We do animal control, and that's completely off the scope of what we should be doing. Our work comp carrier was not aware we did animal control. Like, people have received no professional training to do animal control. We're doing it with all the other corporations because it made sense, and it's cost-saving. Put the animal control contract out for bed for the county and see what you get for numbers. You should, because my department really shouldn't be doing it. I mean, we work those calls in between EMS calls. I take almost all the animal control calls during the day, so I have the staff members available for service. It's real simple. We got, we got an opportunity here to replace a piece of equipment that's going to last the county for 20-plus years. It's an essential service. No, we're not required to provide a metal.
Well, it just seems like, the volunteer problem, I get it. I understand that's a nationwide problem. Period, doubt, end of story. But it is still under the jurisdiction of the municipalities and the township, not the county. We cannot be everybody's insurance policy, everybody's answer for everything that goes on, and I think we might be stretching into some liability questions by sticking our neck out on some of these things.
We're not going any farther out with our neck than what we've had it for the last, I've been around for 40 years with Woodbury County, almost 40 years. This is no switch to what we've been doing that through the whole time. And I would tell you that in 40 years with my department, we've had one litigation brought against us, and that was over the Hornet Flood, and that was not to fall to Woodbury County. That was because we just happened to be in the wrong place at the wrong time. Our work comp claims in my department are almost none. We probably have one of the lowest work comp claims for a public safety agency that there is. Our guys are careful, they work hard to be safe, you know, so it's, I don't think we're sticking our necks out any farther.
Isn't that 24-hour shifts that you got, isn't that reserved only for fire crews?
That's correct.
Then if we don't have a fire department, how are we doing the 24-hour thing?
Well, we went through all of this back in the Ed Gallin days when we brought in Jack Lickelback, who was a Fair Labor Standards Act consultant, and their attorneys at his firm looked at exactly what we do. We went through this from stem to stern. It was a result of the Sheriff's Department's litigation over their work hours, and he took it all the way through the Fair Labor Standards Act, policy, procedure, the whole nine yards. And that's where we got into the 207K plan. Before that, our paid staff was salaried employees, and we weren't paying them probably to the level that we should have been. And there's where we could have had litigation. We worked 212 hours in a 28-hour cycle. You take away the fire cycle, okay? Which we're doing right now, which we believe is totally legal, to provide the same level of EMS coverage I'm providing today, I need two and a quarter more employees for $155,000 a year.
Or more employees than we aren't required to have in the first place.
Correct, but if you want to continue to provide the services we started a year ago in July, which is making a huge difference out there, I can tell you, I got a list of people that we've made a difference on, all the way from babies to.
I'm sure you do, but at the same time, I don't like taxing our taxpayers countywide twice for services they're already paying for once.
And I feel the same way about paying for law enforcement twice. I live in Sioux City.
Well, that's an elected official on that side, so I'm not going to be responsible for what Sheriff Drew does.
Well, we've been okay with paying for this, for, or supporting this support venture as long as we've all been on the board. It's not as if this is just a new request. We're searching for a deal, and it's in the, it's in your plan at least. So, that's why it's being brought up. It's not.
And with that, Matthew.
But I do have a question.
Just if I could make a point there, two years ago, just a little over two years ago, CF Industries donated a mini pumper to us. That was set through the board for action, and the board, all five board members voted to accept that piece of work. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Right. How is it used for the dive team, or any other functions that could not be classified as, okay, this is a mini fire department?
The air compressor will fill scuba tanks, it will fill SCBA's, it will fill low pressure and high pressure. When you're on the scene of a dive operation, we're able to go there, we have the adapters where we can fill the SCBA tanks or the scuba tanks right if they're on site, and they fit into our explosion-proof chamber that we filled it. We fill all of the tanks. We won't fill a tank unless it's cleared to be filled by its date and condition, and they all go inside an explosion-proof container when they're being filled.
Sir.
I have one more suggestion, boss, can I talk to Jerry a little bit about this? For the paramedics, we shared that, you know, 50/50, you know, countywide, 50%, 50% out of rural basic, potentially. And then we do charge for paramedic calls, and if I understand that right, then why can't we get some income back then if the truck is bought? That when we fill a tank, there is a charge that goes back into either Gary's budget or wherever he funded from. In this case, it's probably should go back Gary's, because that's where the paramedic costs are going back to offset some of the costs.
Well, so like, that would be passed on to insurance, right? Because the.
This would be a cost to the fire department for.
Well, doesn't the local fire department charge for response?
If the city mobile needs four tanks covered, you know, fill, charge them something. We charge paramedic costs.
Is this based on where the fire happens, or is it based on who?
Depends who they're, they know who their tanks are.
I seen an accident out of our county where Pushing was going over to Holstein. I mean, I like your thinking because you're thinking, and not that you normally don't do, I'm just saying, I like that.
That's how I came across.
Since you're coming up with creative solutions, I just look at the implementation of it, and you say, well, this volunteer fire department went over here, and it's not really their home jurisdiction, and then now we're going to charge them.
Okay, but I don't think we're crossing county lines taking the truck into Idaho County or Cherokee.
We go.
Don't have to.
But if Pushing goes, you know, to help out over here, and you say, well, you went and you helped, and now we're going to, I just think it's.
Maybe we should charge them. Absolutely. The city, the city cushion is making that choice over there. They have to go there probably.
And they're going to make the choice. Again, I appreciate your thinking, I just think it's overly complicated how you're going to do it. They will probably not want to go in the future.
I don't want another volunteer fire department saying, we're not going to go help in Correctionville because we'd have to pay to have our tanks filled.
Well, just to help this.
Well, you've got to get some revenue somewhere to pay these bills.
One of the, one of the things I've approached the County Fire Association about is there's a maintenance cost on this compressor. It's a couple thousand dollars a year. And the fire association generates a small amount of revenue off of their fire school that they host every year. I'm not in favor of billing the fire departments for filling their tanks, because it's going to be like I'm taking money away from their fish fry and their pancake breakfast. But I have approached the association, they don't meet until September, to see if they would be interested in helping fund some of those maintenance costs on this compressor on an annual basis. And I've had some good feedback thus far. I can't commit to that. I won't promise that, but I have, I have talked to them. You know, three years ago, I applied for a grant from Missouri River Historical Development to do this project, and I was denied. I had letters of support that I submitted to MIR from every fire department in the county was in support of this project, and I feel that same support still exists today.
Because they're not paying for it. They're not being held to, because we can't levy for it without taking over the entire system, so of course they want it. That is their responsibility on the municipal side and the township side. I'm just against levying twice. I mean, we can't solve all the problems out there in the county, whether it's paramedics or EMTs, firefighters, air compressors, whatever. I just am not comfortable taxing twice for something that we're not required to do.
I think the trouble is, you know, you alluded to it, it's a service that's currently provided, like the paramedics, countywide law enforcement, fires. I'd like to have, at some point, a comprehensive plan where we take a step back. Maybe it's once we're going to do the comp plans, where we say, so what is the role in terms of all of these services and how they're allocated? The trouble right now is, it is something that we provided in the past, and by virtue of this breaking down now, you know, we're saying, we should, we shouldn't. I respect you taking a second look at this, because I don't, just because we've done something in the past doesn't mean we should in the future, so I appreciate your bringing up some of those points.
But what township do you see around?
Concord.
Concord. Is there a Concord Township Fire Department?
No, it's not a lot.
Okay, so that's the volunteer, and that money goes to their volunteer department?
Dennis, did you say?
They do 28 agreements with the cities. They have to. Townships.
Oh, the townships do.
Have fire departments, will they contract or 28?
Well, I can't imagine that much money.
I don't think a single township has a fire department.
There are township fires, Liberty and Lakeport have.
Do they really?
They contracted the city of Salix for fire.
But I think Dennis said that my township is almost at the max.
Yeah, they're $3,200 more they could levy. They couldn't levy. There's three townships here that cannot levy. If we did this plan, they wouldn't have enough money to even levy it. The rest would have the money, but they aren't at their max levies.
They are or are not?
They are not. But there's three. There's Concord, Little Sioux, and Woodbury.
That are at their max?
No, they're close enough to their max. They could not cover this plan. That creates a little bit of a problem, because if three we can't cover, why are we going to charge the rest?
And Sergeant Bluff's not going to want to be part of it.
No.
And neither is Sioux City.
And that's why these numbers are distorted, because you are including Sergeant Bluff's Sioux City, which is the bulk of the population. If they were included, knock this way down. But again, each town would have to approve it, to do it in their budget, and each township would have to approve it. And if one doesn't, what do you do then? You can't cut the service off. You have to provide the service, so.
Well.
It's just a thought to fund it. It's just a thought to fund it or have it paid for.
When was the last time you filled tanks?
I don't know, I submitted the latest to the board, it's in your board package, I can look here, I got it. I mean, it's sporadic, you could go, you could go a month without filling tanks, and then you could be out three times in a night.
Looks like on average, three or four times a month, to me.
Structure Fire seven thirty-one of two thousand nineteen in correction.
And then you charged for the last one?
No, we've never charged.
Well, if we're talking about how to charge for a.
No, we're gonna have to set up before you have a lot of hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck in.
Well, here's the problem with charging, you go to, you go to a fire like Connect Spotty Shop, you got nine fire departments there, you're filling tanks, who do you bill? Each fire department, or do you bill Correctionville?
No, it's just a.
And then what about training? We do training together, we all train together, we go to their training, they come to ours. We may not go to their SCBA training, but we just went to Dream Bin Rescue Training down in Hornet. So now, do they charge my guys to come to their class, because they paid for the instructor? So it's, there's a huge trade-off that goes on out there every day. You know, I, as far as a comprehensive plan, you know, we've looked at that in the past, other communities have tried it, it's gonna take some leadership, it's gonna take some money, the right way to do it is there's some consulting firms that you can bring in that will come in with their, with a perspective not yours, and they'll look at all the pieces and parts, and not cite it one direction or another, you know, anytime you bring the locals together into a meeting, you're, you're gonna get their perspective. So who leads that conversation? And I haven't priced that for probably eight or ten years, but the last time I priced it just on the EMS side was fifty-five thousand dollars to get started.
So let's get down to some brass tacks then, in terms of what is actually possible. If we approve this, then it comes out of CIP, that's gonna be countywide, is that correct?
Correct.
And there's no fifty-fifty rural basic versus any, you know, it's just, it's countywide, right? Like we've done with the paramedics, we did fifty-fifty, law enforcement, probably fifty-fifty.
Law enforcement's a little different.
Right.
Because that is a countywide tax, so the cities, the sheriff has to go in the cities for the rural.
Right, we've dedicated certain amounts of rural basic versus general.
Yes, we have to sum this over to a rural basic.
Right, and then we're looking at that on roads too, correct? Where we wanted to go prior.
It'll be newer, right? Put some levy on the city.
But you're saying, if we go with this, we're gonna, on a CIP basis, this is going to be countywide?
Correct, it'll be on our debt service, because we fund that, borrow the money you may pay next year, so it won't affect our taxes this year.
So you could take fifty from gaming, which gaming revenue ideally is supposed to be buying stuff, kind of like this.
What's the, what's the largest piece of equipment gaming has been used for in the last few years, Dennis?
The training center?
I'd say probably a building would be the event center.
Okay, so the bar is pretty.
Yeah, and you only have two-hundred-one thousand dollars left with gaming revenue, and you only have twenty-six thousand of local ops left.
I'm uncomfortable, if there's a chiller that goes out and building services and they historically replace that, we don't look in that case, we might worry here is, historically, you know, and again, I appreciate Rocky bringing up some of the points that have been brought up, but I don't necessarily wanna erode so much gaming because it's kind of a, not an everyday thing.
Well, I see what we're doing here is just replacing an old piece of equipment, but we didn't fund it in the budget.
Well.
It wasn't in the CIP budget, but we received the CIP with all the different projects, because like I said.
Well, we didn't fund every project in there, did we? Did we allocate funds for every project in the CIP?
There were funds allocated, but again, it's just accepted, you did not approve them, that's why I said at the beginning of the year.
It was just a receiving, it was not a, yeah.
Because we don't levy the money until the following year.
But originally, we had two-hundred-and-twenty thousand in the CIP, right? We had two-hundred-and-twenty.
We had two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, correct.
But there was no two-hundred-and-twenty thousand allocated to this exact project, was there?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, but they were all received, they weren't actually approved, and that's why Gary's here today.
We don't do everything in the CIP.
We go down and approve it or disapprove. Same way, we came in with some electric equipment, we've come in with a kitchen, there'll be things coming up through the year, that's why the CIP is a moving target until May. Dennis, pretty much done, because we have to have our commitments by May tomorrow Monday.
I think what we signaled to people is that every one of those was a one-hundred percent maybe.
Right.
Yes, exactly, they have to come after the board.
And that's exactly how we felt at the time, and we were looking for a way to save some dollars on this, because I wasn't convinced we needed a new truck. So, there's a, there's Fire Trader Magazine, it's got a dozen websites in it, and we've been watching them for the last year and a half, and we've not found a piece of equipment that was worth buying or met our needs until this one that we've got on hold right now.
Go ahead. For the balance of the board, with the, with the, with the funding issues and the big-money ticket items we have in front of us, maybe this hundred-and-fifty thousand doesn't sound like that much, but I think it can be better spent elsewhere, on things that we're required to levy for, that we're required to do, structures, what have you. I just think, we got a lot of big-ticket items in front of us, and I'm not, I'm not there with spending this much money on something. Again, Sergeant Bluff got one for sixty, fifty-five or sixty thousand. I don't understand why the county needs to foot the bill for, for this big of an item.
Well, I'm just on the other side, because I think if we're replacing a piece of equipment that gets enough.
That we're not required to have.
Okay. Can I finish?
Sure.
Okay. My feelings are, it's a piece of equipment that I think, and we had it down alongside the Floyd River when I was on the police department, and when you're getting public safety, and you're right with the volunteer fire departments, they're not gonna all of a sudden have more and more manpower showing up, and I think if we can help them all, I think that's kind of what a county does.
I think Sergeant Bluff traditionally has got openings, and they're the biggest and most well-equipped, most well-staffed fire department.
They're not full-time yet, are they? They've got some full-time, and then the rest volunteers.
Somebody stays in the station overnight.
Yeah, but that's why, to me personally, I think it's a piece of equipment that, you know, I'm glad we're not spending two-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
Plus another fifty-three or fifty-five in the years.
But, so I, and whether we're required to do it or not with public safety issues, I'm more than willing to do more than what we're required to do. You know, and you talked about going into burning fire, I can tell you from my career, I got reprimanded twice for going into fires to make sure there weren't people in the rooms, because the trucks weren't there yet. You know, sometimes you just do what you have to do, whether it's required or not.
So you don't think we could take a portion out of gaming, like seventy?
Seventy, Colin? If you're gonna buy, just will buy it on CIP and levy the money for it. It doesn't make that big a difference in the overall tax levy, we'd be talking about two cents a thousand or one cent a thousand.
Yeah, the total is about three cents per thousand.
Which isn't much, but that gaming revenue is one of the few funds that you can use it anywhere you want to use it, you got, what, nine more months to go?
CIP spread out over five years, so maybe, correct?
Yes, yes.
So you're not levying that all up in time.
No, not up front. No, it'll be five years, thirty thousand years, a year down to penny a year, or less than that, yes. Now, some kind of misexceptional people don't understand this hundred-and-fifty is spread out over five years.
Pay back in a year.
Right, we want to pay back in a year, yes, but we spread it out to soften it. So I wouldn't recommend using gaming.
I wouldn't either, I just didn't run it through CIP.
You may need a new town road here, because now things could be coming up, you may need it.
I'll take it this same movement, I will move this item for the hundred-and-forty-nine thousand through CIP.
I'll second it for that sake. Any other comments from you guys individually on it?
I'm, you know, supportive only with the idea that I think within a year to two years' time, we have to look at, you know, all of these different issues more comprehensively. I don't know if bringing in consultants is all right.
Yeah.
You know, but somehow, we're gonna have to look at paramedics' roads, countywide law enforcement, fires, and we're gonna have to kind of figure this out.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Where are we gonna go next? If we don't draw a line in the sand, where is this gonna stop?
I guess that's not for any one of us to know. I gotta say, motion by Potapon, second by Raddick. Matthew, do you have anything to add to, or?
No, I just keep thinking about how we were talking about lobbying the state to make EMS an essential service, because we did what wasn't required.
And that effort's still ongoing, that effort's still ongoing. I actually provided some legislation a few years back that would have created a co-op to allow cities, counties, municipalities, township trustees to come together as a co-op to provide these kind of services. Problem with this topic is, nobody has the answer, and everybody's got their agenda. You get into lobbying, you get into trying to solve this, you've got volunteers versus paid, you've got career versus volunteer, you've got a lot of issues that, and so far, there's not been a consensus in the state on a real solution. It's gonna have to come, I'm with you, Drew, it's gotta come. We just can't keep winging it.
Well, you don't know what you got till it's gone.
It does seem kind of outdated having, you know, twenty-three townships out there that are supposed to somehow levy something and provide a fire service, you know, that, we don't have a bunch of horses pulling barrels of water anymore, you know, I don't, when this was probably designed. I think we absolutely need to look at strategic planning, not necessarily comprehensive planning with a consultant, but, I mean, if we're gonna continue providing a service, even if it's in conjunction and partnership with volunteer departments, there does need to be, what I would say, a legal and adequate funding mechanism for that service. I guess if this was something that was received and loosely received, however we want to call it in our CIP, and we're getting a better deal, I have a hard time then not approving So, yeah, I absolutely agree with your points as too, as well, Rocky. Yeah, it is replacing of a machine, and this is something that is benefiting the volunteer departments, because then they're not all buying a similar truck. And maybe even Sergeant Bluff, if they didn't, you know, their truck was not adequate, maybe ours could help them as well, but.
We used to provide, and still will, to help Sergeant Bluff out, the reason they went out and found a truck is because ours broke down going to a major fire that they'd had, and we left them out away to fill tanks. I think they were running them back and forth over to the airport, the airport fire station.
Try to get it for one forty.
I've negotiated from one sixty to one forty-nine already, so.
Tell him your chair sells furniture, and he doesn't accept that.
Yes.
One forty.
Yeah.
His wife just left him for a furniture salesman or something. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
And that passes four to one.
We will keep you posted on the progress. We also are working on bringing forward to board a summation, sort of a summary of this last year's paramedics' work and EMT's work, they think you'll be extremely happy.
Be sure to let them know that it's gonna cost you money to drive down there and try it, so we expect that off the price.
Okay.
All right.
I'm planning on them having it ready to go, we've done everything we can over the internet to see it, so. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
We're going to item fourteen from the Board of Supervisors, approval of payment for ATV decals. You can talk on it if you want, if not, I think we've discussed it.
Just a point of reference that next year will actually be attached to the Treasurer's line item as a purchase line item, so it'll be, this, we should never have to deal with this again on a, on a single vote.
This buys enough for this year?
These are for twenty-twenty.
Yeah, but I mean, this is enough.
What was the, what was it, gaming, what was it in there?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go ahead and.
Rubber from the sale, we're putting in rural basic, that's where.
I'll go ahead and move it. Motion by Raddick, second by Taylor, any other questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes five to zero, moving on to committee meetings, starting with Jeremy.
I have the opportunity to attend ISAC last week, attended some different sessions, seminars. One of them was about the power of accountability, driving ownership within your county, and this particular session was very well-attended, there was a lot of people looking at the projector screen, and one of the slides really, really resonated with the group, so if Karen could put that up. So we had a good, a good chance for Raddick to defend himself, but he wasn't there, so.
So it says.
There's a couple of questions that come to mind, one is, who's Allison?
Right.
And why is Chairman Raddick planning another hundredth anniversary celebration when we've just had one?
It is nice to know that there is a Keith Raddick mask out there. I think it's.
Actually.
That would probably be one of the scariest ones for the kids.
Actually, I think as you were coming down the stairs, you may have dropped something, and Dennis picked something up, I don't know, does this belong to you?
It's, it is a mirror image, I tell you.
Is that a pet?
I don't think so.
That's a deer.
Looked just like my glasses, for sure.
So they asked me if I was Raddick, I said no, but that's funny. The policy statements for next year for ISAC, of course, will center on mental health again, but one thing I brought up to you all earlier was about the bonding levels for courthouse and jail improvements being too low for a county of our size to trigger the referendum, so that's gonna be one of their priorities next year, and I'll plan to keep, keep on that, remind them that we have several looming issues that we may have to fix, and that's an undue barrier, so, that's all I got.
Rocky?
No.
Rocky? I had an SEDC meeting on Wednesday that was interestingly hijacked by the SBA, actually had the federal government in Sioux City, and somebody from the Kansas City office as well as, I think, seven individuals from Washington DC, so it was interesting discussion on the programs, one thing that they said was not being utilized in this area, and only two in all of Iowa is a microloan program, requiring to have a, I think, a nonprofit organization that runs that, but that might be something interesting to see in this area of western Iowa. Moving on to citizen concern round two. All right, moving on to board concern round one, I'm gonna start off with the employee appreciation event, that was just brought up, so. What do you, do you think we could move it to the park over here, and I'll, I'll bring my trailer so we can move all the tables over and. Said he'll let us use it, I'm sure.
I'm not there that day, I'm in the military, so know that I wouldn't, but meaningful day.
How are you gonna monitor if the public is coming in, are you gonna put a rope around the park?
We're gonna spray paint everyone's finger after they go through the line.
I guarantee you, you will have some people coming in, and I, unfortunately, be people a lot places ago. How are you gonna feed them too? Because we never have them back, because then you start getting a bigger, bigger, we do feed them? That's more employee, whatever.
I think moving it inside would make more sense.
Good, okay.
I mean, the halls were doing it here.
Well, have we done it inside before, or we've done, we've done something inside?
It's the Christmas deal.
Yeah, we do the Christmas one inside anyway, so.
I mean, the.
I just thought the park would be cool for cornhole, you know.
Make them do that right out on the sidewalk. That would be my suggestion, but I don't care if you wanna move it across to the park, I can go there too, so.
It's hard to grill inside, so.
We've done that before, we had hot dogs lying across the grill.
Oh, yeah, we could do that.
Let's get a little better taste of the real grill.
Sure, sure.
Where's, where's Mid-America gonna be working? The back alley? Because you could always grill on the other one and bring.
You got a range hood in there? There's a hood in there, right? I could bring in my green egg. We can grill on that in there. Just vent the air outside.
Whatever pleases the crown.
And call the fire department if we need to.
There's no fires with a green egg. They're the safest grill.
How big is it? Can you grill forty at a time?
I got it two levels.
I'm worried with my kids here, we've covered green eggs and masks and hot dogs.
You guys learning stuff today? I see he's been reading the whole time. You've been paying attention, right? Are you proud of dad or embarrassed? So, okay, um, Town Hall Pearson Thursday, nine twelve at six thirty. And then Hornick nine nineteen Thursday again, six thirty. And Sloan was not available for next month? Any of those work for you? Or you gotta?
What night is it?
Thursdays.
He said Pearson on the twelfth at six thirty?
Yep. Hornick's a community center. Pearson, I think, is up there. It's the hall building that's right on the corner there. You got something to do there?
Just update on two things.
Okay.
That's the nineteenth I won't make.
Uh, Sloan, I, they're not available for next month, so. Go ahead.
Okay, in regards to the jail issue here, we have sent out, um, Larry has sent out to nine different vendors for requests for proposals. We have had, he did send them also out to all of our local banks to give a local interest a possibility. Also, we had Baird from Sioux City here. I had two others. One lady stopped in today and I had another one leave her stuff, or his stuff here. So we're getting a tremendous interest on this. I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of people presenting proposals. And that is September seventeenth. We get them in the office at seven o'clock and come back with something that night to receive, review, and go over some more before we make your final determination. The other thing is with the road project, we were planning on going September third to set a hearing date on amending our TIF plan. But that has been pushed back a little bit because consultation with Bob Justin, our attorney, and we agree with him. And Mark sat there on the conference call that we're gonna list every road that's gonna be done. That way nobody can come back and say, why didn't you do my road or this road? He's gonna have a list following the map. He says, then nobody can ever come back on us. And when you do that, that'll be September seventeenth. A month later, we'll do October seventeenth to amend our plan. The plan is gonna have this list there over a five-year period to do the gravel project. And that is about all I've got. And to explain the plan just real short, the plan is amending how you're spending the money. The TIF ordinance is the ordinance that draws the parameters, boundary lines of what we're taxing. We are not changing what we're taxing, so we do not need to amend our ordinance or amending, having a public hearing is our plan, how to spend the money. So that's the difference there. And I always learn something somewhere. So every day is a good day when you learn something. But anyway, that's the plans for that. And we need to get it done by October seventeen because we gotta go to the banks for fair out, we're gonna borrow the money so I can certify debt December first to be able to use the TIF revenue the following year. But talking to our attorney, we should follow those parameters and be all right.
All right, any other concerns there, Jeremy? Matthew?
Rocky?
All right, none. So we are adjourned.